It is now 6:00 PM. And I will wait to see our counselors turn on their cameras. But you're listening to the City of Iowa City regular formal meeting, April 20th, 2021. It is 6:00 PM and I do see. Just missing one counselor. Counselor Taylor. I don't see Counselor Taylor. I know that our sign-ins today was a little unusual than what we've been used to, so we'll wait for her to join in. I know staff will reach out to her while we'll just give her just another minute here and then we'll get started. All right, so Counselor Taylor is getting another link to chime in. I think we'll go ahead with roll call, please.
Bergus?
Here.
Mims?
Here.
Solly?
Yeah.
Taylor? Teague?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Weiner?
Well, good evening. Before we start tonight's meeting, I wanted to reach out to our community as we grieve the death of George Floyd and process this afternoon's verdict in the trial of Officer Derek Chauvin. We have all anxiously awaited the decision finding Chauvin guilty on all three counts. We all saw the video of George Floyd. And I want to thank the members of the jury for reaching this verdict. I support this verdict and hope that it serves as a clear message to law enforcement that you will be held accountable for criminal and hateful actions. Our nation is in a crisis on several fronts. Throughout the trial, we continue to see painful and heartbreaking interactions between law enforcement and our community of colors. Our heart goes out to the families, friends, neighbors, and members of our community of color who are grieving over these terrible tragedies. While these incidents may be hundreds of miles away from Iowa City, we must reflect and learn from these painful situations. We know the public expects better here in Iowa City. And we know the people who serve on the Iowa City Police Department expect better of themselves as well. We have started the work that will continue to prioritize the focus of our public safety response to serve all members of our community. Enhance trust and serve with courage and compassion. This means continuing to rethink the response for our calls for service and connecting victims and those in crisis with appropriate care. Compassionate service is a key part of our police department's mission. And we must ensure that value is always forefront and the center with each of our responses. Gun violence has moved to an epidemic stage. On a daily basis, we see senseless acts of killings across our nation. Our state and our city are not immune to this wave of gun violence. We grow angry together over the senseless mass shootings that claim lives of the innocent. Our prayers go out to those in Boulder, Atlanta, Indianapolis, and numerous other cities that are coping with these terrible tragedies. We implore our state and federal leaders to pursue sensible gun reform. Finally, we stand with all persons of any race, religion, gender identity, citizenship status, or other personal characteristics. We strongly support the hashtag Stop Asian Hate and Black Lives Matter movement. We stand up for all persons. On behalf of the Iowa City City Council, we loudly and clearly express that you are welcome here in Iowa City and pledge that we will continue to work hard to ensure that this community embraces and celebrates our diverse population. Let us take a moment to reflect one more time on the life of George Floyd. Today's verdict does not provide us with a sense of peace or comfort, but does bring us together in our time of grief to become a stronger community and one that understands the need for change. We will need to lean on each other. As mayor of this community, I know we have a lot of difficult work ahead. I also know our residents will need space and time to process all of these tragedies. We are stronger together, and I thank all of the residents for their shared care and compassion. And I ask us all to join in a moment of silence for George Floyd. Thank you.
We are at item number two, 2A COVID update, and we're going to have that by our Johnson County Public Health, Sam Jarvis, who is the Community Health Division's manager.
Good evening, Iowa City Council, and Mayor, and everyone. Thank you for having us. Happy to report on both fronts of the COVID-19 pandemic. I'll start off with the disease side of things and provide updates there and then do vaccine updates. For the most part, many are probably very aware of our caseload that can be seen on the state's dashboard, but we're roughly seeing about an average of 30 cases a day. Looking at kind of what that disease profile is, we are seeing younger persons. The average age is roughly someone in their late twenties. You know, looking at just April cases of lone in total, there's less than about 20 persons who are 65 and older. And so, you know, I think most are aware, and we've reported it before, that we have a pretty high vaccine level in our older adult population. And so, that's wonderful to see. I think, again, it just kind of points in that direction that vaccinations are doing what they're supposed to do, which is prevent illness. And then also on the state's dashboard, there are virtually, or there are no long-term care outbreaks in Johnson County. I believe there's only one active outbreak in the entire state at this moment. And we've really seen that trend continue downward, if not be virtually non-existent since the vaccine campaign had started in December for our long-term care workers and staff as we were able to extend eligibility to those who are 65 and older. So in terms of other notable items, in terms of disease investigations, I know the state had sent out a press release, I believe, last week. The P1 variant was identified, as well as many are aware that the B117 variant has been identified as well and is likely the dominant strain. The CDC had noted that as well. So in terms of mitigation measures, what we're asking and continue to ask are the same. To continue to wear masks in the presence of others and physical distance. Certainly stay home if you're ill. Right now, it's allergy season. And so, we're asking people to be vigilant and be mindful of those things and really be aware of what their symptoms are, even if mild. So those things have not changed, and we hope to continue to hear more good news about lower caseloads in the future. On the disease side of, or sorry, the vaccine side of things, we have come so far since December 14th and likely are meeting the demand of vaccines now and in the past couple of weeks. Thinking about back where we were at a month ago, this was not a reality. There was a high demand. Persons were looking for vaccine appointments across the entire state, maybe even out of state. But if you're watching Vaccine Spotter Iowa or other ones, you're noticing a lot more availability of appointments, and many are lingering much longer than once before. In terms of the allocation that we're receiving as a county, we received our largest allocation last week, roughly 6,000 some doses. And that's not including the doses that other CEPS and network pharmacies and other retail pharmacies are receiving from the federal government on that side. So we are seeing a lot of vaccines being supplied to our community. And we'll continue to see that. As many are aware, roughly half of the counties in Iowa are declining doses, and we'll likely see those redistributed to more populous areas. So we'll continue to meet that demand. Overall, the rate of vaccinations, on average, this past month, we're looking at roughly 5,000 some individuals getting vaccinated each week. So that's tremendous progress, and we thank our partners at the University, at Mercy, Towncrest, and Hy-Vee, New Care, and Hardegg. Many of our COVID-19 providers have really stepped up. They're doing off-site clinics. They're doing mass vaccination clinics. They're doing smaller clinics across the community. Johnson County Ambulance was able to help us as well, and they were helping vaccinate other portions of our community too. So really, it's been such a tremendous effort on so many fronts with so many partners. So we do want to express all our gratitude towards everyone really collaborating and thinking outside of the box in terms of the vaccine. At one point in time, many thought, well, I'll just go to my doctor's office or walk into a pharmacy. But there's been so many creative ways to be able to provide vaccination. So other than that, happy to answer any questions.
Sam, just efforts underway to reach folks who may still be hesitant or not sure that they still that they want to get the vaccine. I mean, I'm fully convinced. I just got my second dose today. Extremely grateful, but not everybody's in that boat.
Yeah, well, you know, so in terms of outreach, we've got staff who are going to different places. Reach out to other community partners to plan times to be onsite to address questions. I know that Project Better Together is also planning on working to address head-on see provide vaccine competence and information going on in the future. So we're in step with them as well and planning for the future. At this point, I know that our Vaccine Watch Wednesday series, we're asking a lot of folks to share that. We're asking folks to be that word of mouth, that trusted insider, to continue to share those stories. We often hear a lot of folks say, well, I know someone who wasn't going to get vaccinated, but then they found out I got vaccinated, so they're going to do it too. And so, that really does help, I think, really talking about it. We hear that with a lot of community partners, we hear that with a lot of other staff and their family members. But, you know, we're roughly at, I think we reported out last night, the joint ED's meeting that we're around potentially 60 some percent of our population being vaccinated, at least first dose, or completing the series. So we're making great progress, but every percentage point getting closer to 100 will be a little bit harder to get. If not, we know some impossible times. We know that there are some people who just cannot be convinced, but we'll continue to work on that.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. All right, we are moving on to items number three. 3A, which will be our Arbor Day proclamation. And I'm going to ask that Counselor Thomas present this for us. And if you'll turn on your mic, please.
Whereas the coming of spring produces a renewal of interest in tree planting for beauty, shade, conservation, and many other purposes beneficial to all people. And whereas the observation of Arbor Day has long been characterized by the planting and preservation of trees. And whereas trees in Iowa City beautify our community, increase property values, reduce pollution, lower energy costs, and enhance the economic vitality of business areas. And whereas because trees absorb carbon dioxide and release oxygen, having a diverse and healthy tree population constitutes a major part of Iowa City's effort to mitigate against climate change. And whereas trees can provide natural air conditioning, the evaporation from a single tree can produce the cooling effect of 10 room-size air conditioners operating 20 hours a day. And whereas evergreen trees can be used to reduce wind speed in this loss of heat from our homes in the winter by as much as 10 to 50%. Now therefore, on behalf of Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, I do proclaim April 30th, 2021 to be Arbor Day in Iowa City. And I hereby urge all citizens to participate in tree planting and preservation projects throughout the year.
And here to receive this proclamation is Julie Seidel Johnson, who is our Parks and Recreation Director.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmember Thomas. Glad to talk about trees and celebrate Arbor Day. It's a very popular topic here in Iowa City. But I want to make sure people know that we've had a tough year for trees. We've lost several through Emerald Ashmore. The duration came through, and we estimate about 1,000 trees were lost with that. And then other ones have been lost due to project work, utility works, stormwater work. But we are quickly replanting, and that's the good news at this point. We have several events between now and Arbor Day where we are replanting trees along Court Street Park and then in the Normandy Park neighborhood along lots of other areas. We have a couple contracts on the council agenda later tonight that will bring us to a total of about 1,000 trees planted during this planting season. So although we have lost a number of big trees, we are actively working to replant them. I also want to mention that we had a special honor this past year. Not only are we a Tree City USA, which we have been for a number of years, but Rayland Schieper, our maintenance worker, or senior maintenance worker in forestry, was deemed Iowa's outstanding forestry professional by the Iowa Urban Tree Council. So that's a real honor statewide to be recognized for having professional staff in the area of forestry. So proud of it, and thank you for recognizing Arbor Day for us.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Item 3B proclamation is Housing Trust Fund Week, and presenting this will be Counselor Weiner.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the Housing Trust Fund of Johnson County was founded in 2004. And whereas for 17 years, the Housing Trust Fund of Johnson County has been creating and preserving housing that is affordable. And whereas the Housing Trust Fund of Johnson County has committed more than $10 million for housing that is affordable. And whereas more than 900 units of housing that is affordable have been created and preserved for citizens of Johnson County by the Housing Trust Fund. And whereas the City of Iowa City has provided a substantial amount of the funding for the work accomplished by the Housing Trust Fund of Johnson County. And whereas the Housing Trust Fund's Affordable Housing Highlights Program will take place on Friday, April 23 at noon via Zoom and Facebook Live, hosted by the Johnson County Affordable Housing Coalition, and will be recorded for viewing on the Housing Trust Fund of Johnson County's Facebook page. Now therefore, on behalf of Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, I do hereby proclaim April 23rd to 29th, 2021 to be Housing Trust Fund Week in Iowa City and encourage residents to learn more about the Housing Trust Fund of Johnson County and their mission to promote and support housing that is affordable. And receiving the proclamation will be Ellen McCabe, Executive Director of the Housing Trust Fund of Johnson County. Welcome, Ellen.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Weiner. Mayor Teague, city counselors, and city staff. It is an honor to accept this proclamation on behalf of the Housing Trust Fund of Johnson County. Housing that is affordable contributes to the health of our community. It impacts the health of individuals and families, as well as the health of our local economy. The lack of housing that is affordable is a complex problem. The root of the problem lies in wages not keeping up with the rising cost of housing, particularly in jobs at the lower end of the wage scale. We have here in Johnson County the highest housing wage in the state of Iowa. And someone needs to work a full-time job that pays at least $19 an hour to afford a modest two-bedroom apartment. Next slide, please. Here in Iowa City, as shown on this table, there are 17,000 households with low incomes. That represents 58% of all households. And a staggering 27% of our neighbors have incomes that are considered to be extremely low. Next slide, please. As shown in the first column of this table, almost 9,000 rental households are paying more than 30% of their income on housing, and they are considered to be cost burdened. Overall, 37% of all households in Iowa City are cost burdened or extremely cost burdened, spending more than 50% of their income on their housing. The Housing Trust Fund holds four funding cycles per year, encouraging applications from a variety of entities interested in creating and preserving housing that is affordable. During our recent winter round, for example, we awarded $720,000 for the development of new rental units for people aged 55 and above. Next, Senior Apartments is slated to have 46 one- and two-bedroom apartments for people with low incomes and plans on leasing those units in a little over a year if it receives additional funding from the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program in August. The Trust Fund appreciates the opportunity to partner with the City of Iowa City in carrying out the city's affordable housing plan. We are fortunate to live in a community that actively addresses the lack of housing that is affordable for people with low incomes. Next slide, please. Please consider learning more about the Trust Fund's investment in affordable housing. We have a webpage and a Facebook page. And you can join us when the Johnson County Affordable Housing Coalition hosts our Affordable Housing Highlights Program noon on Friday, April 23rd. This program will be available on Zoom and on Facebook Live. We will hear from four entities as examples that have developed and preserved housing that is affordable during the past two years with funding from the Housing Trust Fund, much of which was made possible through the City of Iowa City. Thank you again for recognizing Housing Trust Fund Week 2021.
Thank you, and really appreciate you taking time to express to us the real situation here within our community. Item number 3C is National Water Safety Month, and presenting this is Counselor Thomas.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas residents of Iowa City recognize the vital role that swimming and aquatic-related activities relate to good physical and mental health and enhance the quality of life for all people. And whereas Iowa City Parks and Recreation has a goal that every child in Iowa City learn how to swim, which is supported through a robust Learn to Swim program, program scholarships, and three public swimming pools. And whereas the residents of Iowa City understand the essential role that education regarding the topic of water safety plays in preventing drownings and recreational-related injuries. And whereas the residents of Iowa City are aware of the contributions made by the recreational water industry, as represented by the organizations involved in the National Water Safety Month Coalition in developing safe swimming facilities and aquatic programs while providing healthy places to recreate, learn, and grow. And whereas many Iowa City residents have served as part-time lifeguards and swim instructors as their first formal employment. And whereas the residents of Iowa City recognize the ongoing efforts and commitments to educate the public on pool and spa safety issues and initiatives by the pool, spa, water park, recreation, and parks industries. And whereas the residents of Iowa City understand the vital importance of communicating water safety rules and programs to families and individuals of all ages, whether owners of private pools, users of public swimming facilities, or visitors to water parks. Now therefore, on behalf of Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, I do hereby proclaim the month of May to be National Water Safety Month in Iowa City and urge all Iowa City residents to support and promote this important observance.
And to receive this will be our Parks and Recreation Director, Julie Seidel Johnson.
Hey, Mayor, and Councilmember Thomas. Thanks again. This is why my job is so fun. I get to talk about trees and now talk about swimming with you. Iowa City Parks and Recreation has a huge commitment to water safety in the area. Our 2016 master plan includes the vision that every child in Iowa City should learn how to swim and learn basic outdoor skills, things like fishing and kayaking and boating and those sorts of things. We want people to enjoy the outdoors. We want them to have lifelong safety and swimming skills. And then, as we mentioned in the proclamation, this is oftentimes a young person's first job. So we are very much a job training program through our aquatics programs, swimming lesson instructors, cashiers, lifeguards, pool managers. A lot of opportunity to learn work skills there. This is an important public health and lifelong learning skill, safety skill for people, and we appreciate the support of having the three public pools and look forward to having City Park Pool open again this summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 3D is Workers Memorial Day, and this will be read by Counselor Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas 50 years ago, on April 28th, 1971, the Occupational Safety and Health Act went into effect, promising every worker the right to a safe job. And whereas OSHA has saved the lives of an estimated 618,000 workers since its passage, yet in spite of the progress, thousands of workers are killed on the job each year, and millions more suffer illness or injury because of dangerous working conditions. And whereas in the past year, the COVID-19 virus has killed more than 500,000 people in this country so far, devastating working families with a disproportionate impact on people of color. And whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has exposed the lack of resources, enforcement actions, and accountability for agencies tasked with protecting workers' safety and their ability to speak out about unsafe conditions without fear of retaliation. And whereas April 28th is observed as Workers Memorial Day in nearly 100 countries as a day to remember and honor those who have suffered and died on the job and to dedicate ourselves to the fight for safe workplaces. And whereas in this historic moment, we must strengthen workplace safety agencies and protect workers' rights to organize and advocate for their safety in order to renew our promise to working people. And whereas the Iowa City Federation of Labor will hold a remembrance ceremony on April 28th to honor those who have died on the job in Iowa in the previous year and to renew our commitment to safe jobs. Now therefore, do we, the Mayor and City Council of Iowa City, proclaim Wednesday, April 28th, 2021 to be Workers Memorial Day in Iowa City? And accepting the proclamation will be Greg Hearn, President of the Iowa City Federation of Labor. Welcome, Greg. Are you there, Greg?
Yes. Thank you, Counselor Taylor. Mayor Teague, and the rest of the City Council, and also the City of Iowa City. It is my honor to accept this proclamation on behalf of the Iowa City Federation of Labor. It is my honor to accept this proclamation on behalf of the Iowa City Federation of Labor, including University of Iowa Labor Center and all those workers who had to go to work over the last year during this pandemic and work on the front lines when a lot of people were able to work from home. OSHA has done a lot to keep our workers safe over the years, but we also know that over the years their budget has been cut to the bone, and now our investigators barely exist. The pandemic was hard on all of us, but it was exceptionally hard on a lot of our workers. So I acknowledge, and I, you know, I think it's very important that the city of Iowa City and the city council, city council and Mayor Teague recognize Workers Memorial Day on April twenty-eighth. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Greg, and so happy you were able to join us today. All right, we are at items number four through eight, which is our consent agenda. Could I get a motion to approve consent agenda, please?
Second, Taylor.
Followed by Sally, second by Taylor. And would anyone from the public like to address any topic that is listed on our consent agenda? If so, please raise your hand, and I will call upon you. Counts, I do see one, Dan Gable, and I ask people to keep their comments three to five minutes. Welcome, Dan. You're on mute. Welcome.
Hey, so.
Dan, we can't hear you. You were breaking up. We can't hear Dan.
Okay.
There is a poor connection. We cannot hear you. Dan, what I'll do is I'll ask that you, if you can, maybe sign out and sign back in. Sometimes that works to clear up any type of technological issues, but I'll go ahead with council discussion.
I have wanted to just ask staff to address seven B, the early call of the 2012 de taxable urban renewal revenue bonds, please. I think there's a lot of good information there for us and for the public.
Sure. This is Dennis Bach, and said I'm the Finance Director for the city. And I can give you a little background on these bonds. They were issued in the fall of 2012, and they provided about two-point-five million dollar grant for the Park at Two-One building. And we began to actually plan for this call back in 2014 after we called in the Plaza Tower Bonds early. If you are around to remember that. And so we also had some strong valuation growth in the downtown, so we began to set aside a little bit of increment over the last eight years or so, planning to call these in early. Or actually would mature in 2032, but because we were able to accumulate those funds, we were able to call them in and now this year and save approximately four hundred thousand dollars in interest expense on those bonds. And then also just to give an idea of the amount of valuation that was generated from that project, the original valuation on that parcel was just over five hundred thousand dollars and is now about eleven and a half million dollars. And so, so we're experienced quite a bit of taxable growth on that spot. And, and because we're able to set some valuation aside, we're now able to call them in early. And I can answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
All right, I don't see Dan back, but when we go to the next part, I'll certainly have him speak closer when we get there. All right, I'm gonna call for roll call, please.
Burgess.
Yes.
Memes.
Yes.
Sully.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Motion passed to seven to zero. Item number nine is public comment. We ask that people raise their hand, and I will call upon you. And as I, and I'm going to actually advance Dan first to speak. And then we are seeing quite a few hands raised. I wanted to just see how many we all have so that I can state the time. So I'm going to ask people to keep their comments to two minutes, and I welcome Dan. Welcome, Dan. We can't hear Dan. Welcome, Jennifer, followed by Katie.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Jennifer Banta. I am the Vice President of the Iowa City Area Business Partnership, and I wanted to invite council and our community to help us celebrate teachers, administrators, and students this school year during our ninth annual Innovation in Ed Award Ceremony. This Innovation in Ed Award Ceremony honors exceptional students, volunteers, educators, and business partners in Johnson County. This event is co-sponsored by the Business Partnership and the Iowa City Area Development Group in partnership with the University of Iowa, Iowa City School District, Clear Creek, Amanda, Regina, and Willow Winds. Because this school year has been one for the history books, we've decided to recognize more awardees than ever. And we believe that their contributions to the success of our schools and our students has been epic during this last year. We hope the community will help us recognize these award winners and all teachers, administrators, and students this school year. Starting tomorrow, we will be announcing the winners of our, on our social media page. So please keep an eye out for that and help celebrate these fantastic people as we announce them. The awards include the Spark Award, given to an administrator who goes above and beyond to create a positive learning environment for all students. The Inspire Award, which is the favorite, it goes to a teacher that inspires, excites, and influences students to learn through exceptional, unprecedented, or extraordinary programs and teaching methods. We have many more awards, and we would just love to encourage you to help us celebrate. The celebration will culminate with an award ceremony on Wednesday, April twenty-eighth, at the Inglis Theater, beginning at 6:00 PM. Newly appointed Superintendent Matt Degner will be our keynote speaker, and will discuss the challenges that arose from the pandemic and his vision for the future of education in our community. We invite all community members to join the Business Partnership in celebrating the outstanding members of our education community by tuning into the award presentation through our Facebook page.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. So I know that the two minutes is short time for people, but we want to make sure that we allow everyone that we can possible to speak. Welcome, Katie, followed by Manny.
Hi, my name is Katie Beekler. I am with SEIU Local 199. I live here in Iowa City. And I am here tonight supporting the Nine Organization Coalition Demanding and Excluded Workers Fund. More than forty-seven million dollars is coming to Iowa City and Johnson County under the terms of the American Rescue, American Rescue Plan. We know that local, local governments have broad discretion to direct these funds to those that have been the hardest hit by the pandemic, including workers and families. Many individuals, businesses, and professional nonprofits have received relief aid in the past through stimulus checks through the federal government, enhanced unemployment insurance, and the Paycheck Protection Act. So what we're asking is that this round of relief needs to go to the essential and excluded workers who have been hardest hit by the pandemic but have been left out of previous relief. This aid should be distributed in the form of direct cash payments to undocumented immigrants, previously incarcerated people, and those working in unofficial, informal cash economy. Proof of name, address, and self, self-certification of need are the only documents that should be needed to qualify. And grassroots groups from the impacted communities can build a database of recipients and disbursements to guarantee the money is given out appropriately and not duplicated. We also want public sector workers who are in need of hazard pay raises and have been on the front lines of the pandemic this entire last year to be included in these relief payments. That includes public school teachers, other public school staff, healthcare workers at the hospital, and those, those merit staff at the hospital as well, including other public workers. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you, Katie. Welcome, Manny, followed by Meg.
Thank you so much, Mayor. My name is Manny Galvez. I am a resident from Johnson County, and I am also part of the Catholic workers. And I am here right now to support this relief for exclude workers. And basically, for me, I want to say like, this is really, really important because in our county, hundreds of workers without document, they have been working so hard. However, they had not received like a support for any kind, many of them. So I think we can send a message to the rest of the state because Iowa is one of the states like, has been excluding the undocumented community, that all these workers that being like in front of the line for all the pandemic time. However, Iowa is doing so practically nothing for this, for these families, for these workers. And I think, and I recognize that Johnson County and Iowa City are doing so many things in favor, but I feel like that isn't enough, and we can do something else. I think this issue is not a political issue, it's a human issue. We have examples like New York, Colorado, Minneapolis, and another city like that had done something for these communities. And I think we can find a way to support. The most important is to show, not just to Iowa, but to show to the rest of the country that we are in this situation together. And we can something, I mean, respond something and do something for all the people like they have been working so hard during the most like a hard time maybe in the last century. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Welcome, Meg, followed by Nancy.
Good evening. My name is Meg Wagner, and I'm an Episcopal priest serving at Beloved Community Initiative in Old Brick in Iowa City and a member of Johnson County Interfaith Coalition, which is why I'm joining you to speak this evening. There are voices in our community that frequently remain unheard and bodies who are repeatedly sacrificed upon, as the previous two speakers spoke to, and people whose presence doesn't promote economic return. We believe government has an important role in hearing, seeing, and caring for the whole, not just the people and businesses with the loudest voices or most visible bodies. The Iowa City Strategic Plan emphasizes this role of government with its statement that they intend to, that you all intend to foster a more inclusive, just, and sustainable Iowa City by prioritizing the physical, mental, and economic well-being of all of its residents. The first articulated goal to advance social justice, racial equity, and human rights resonates strongly with Johnson County Interfaith Coalition's mission that's working towards more social equity, first and foremost for persons of color. Through the American Rescue Plan, Iowa City will receive over seventeen million dollars. And while we understand that business leaders have been regularly meeting with the city manager and are eagerly looking for financial relief, as faith leaders with Johnson County Interfaith Coalition dedicated to racial justice, we're here to ask three things of our city council and city manager as you begin to plan how that money will be allocated. First, that you schedule time to meet with people of color in the community most directly affected by the pandemic and leaders from the nonprofits who are serving those community members and hear their thoughts on how the seventeen million dollars in funds could be allocated for the greatest good. We want you to hear from folks like Center for Worker Justice and Dream City and Open Heartland, Inside Out, faith leaders, and other groups about and include their wisdom and experiences and your determinations. Two, we ask you to pledge that any direct assistance that be set aside for households will be easily accessible with an application available online in multiple languages with the lowest bar possible set for people to access, apply, and for and receiving those funds. If necessary, we encourage city to consider hiring a temporary administrative assistant. Thank you.
Welcome, Nancy, followed by Nicholas.
Welcome, Nancy.
Mayor Teague and council members. I hope everybody can hear me. My name is Nancy Byrd, and I'm with the Iowa City Downtown District. And I'm here to show, share a couple of updates with you on two particular items, so I'll try and keep them very brief. The first, we are working on our downtown recovery brief and implementation of several of those items, including the release of fifteen thousand dollar build-out grants for new signed retail leases to help fill vacancies related to the pandemic. It's going very well. I think that incentivization is a tool to encourage what we would like to see is really working. And I'm sure we're going to have new retailers as a result of this program that may not have come to Iowa City without them. So we're really pleased to see new interest and diverse interest for, as it relates to that program. We'll also have new projecting signs, twelve or thirteen go up this summer similarly because the businesses were able to reach a little bit when they knew they had a partner in the financial way to help support those, those measures. Second, I wanted to update you on the exploration of a possible 2:00 AM restaurant exception. This has come up in the past, which is, in short, a potential exception from the current ordinance for a restaurant with dining services to stay open and serve alcohol until 2:00 AM instead of 12:00 AM. This is something that we were advocating for and trying to research whether or not that could work to help support the restaurant community that was impacted by COVID. So just to kind of give you a real quick synopsis, what we've discovered is that in this research, that the exception for restaurants to stay open till 2:00 AM with a food to beverage ratio just seemed to be very problematic as a solution. Establishing a high food to beverage ratio as criteria for the exception seemed to create more challenges than it was attempting to solve. It also appears that there is a divide in the approach as to how we support eating and drinking establishments under the current regulations. So as an organization, this comes up often, and I know council members hear a lot about this a lot, but we're still committed to continue to explore ways to change the regulatory framework so that it's simpler, creates a fair and transparent system, and a more competitive environment with other commercial areas of Johnson County for restaurants. So we'll keep you apprised of our thoughts on that direction as we continue to research the next steps available to us in the coming months, but we're staying in touch with staff. And I'd like to think that we're working together to.
Thank you, Nancy.
So thank you for, thank you for your time.
Welcome, Nicholas, followed by Dan.
Good evening, council. Sorry, can you hear me? Am I? Okay, thank you. Um, I just wanted to, one, I guess I'm pleased to hear, Mayor, that you are pleased or, I don't know, I guess I'm just kind of bewildered by your reaction to the Derek Chauvin trial result because you don't really seem to display the same degree of concern for, well, let me just say, black women in this community. And in fact, that was made abundantly clear last Thursday when you showed up after the People's Truth and Reckoning Commission to essentially prevaricate when you were confronted by a black woman about your own silence to do anything about the situation that she was dealing with. And this is such a recurring pattern. We've seen it with Nah, we've seen it with Chris Kelly. And I just want to say, council, the reason why she couldn't deal with her situation is because of your political entanglements. You, your businesses, your livelihoods, they are so entangled with each other and, as it turns out, with the wealthiest and most ruthless people in this community that when someone comes along who is not part of that club, you just don't know what to do. You throw up your hands as if what's happening to Nah were simply a force of nature who can do anything about it. But in reality, the problem is you. She had an impossible time finding legal representation despite being willing and capable of paying because of the political connections of opposing council, and that's not speculation. The lawyers Nah went to said as much, and while no one said the name Laura Burgess, no one had to because that's how this all works. People just know. And the lawyers who just know knew it wasn't worth it for them to take this case on because it had the potential to upset the precious equilibrium where everyone says they care about social justice. But when push comes to shove, we'll defend the interests of capital, of landlords, because their livelihoods depend on it. And you sit there acting as if planning and zoning. And you sit there acting as if planning and zoning decisions were made strictly on their merits when your primary function is to underwrite the wealth of the profits of those who own. You can put whatever spin on it you want, but that's the primary
Followed by, I'm sorry, welcome, Dan. I'm gonna bring Dan up.
All right, can you hear me now?
We can. Welcome.
All right, sorry, I had, I have a new mic and I guess I don't have it figured out. But um, you know what, Mayor? I am not going to accept you giving me two minutes because you have ignored emails about this issue for over a year, as have the other members of the city council. Um, the city council and government of Iowa City do not care about the minority residents residents of our community. This statement is nothing new. As many people have called you out for this before. You all act like good-hearted liberals who oppose systemic racism, but in reality you benefit from and perpetuate it in Iowa City. I would like to bring up a case which will show you just how little your empty rhetoric truly means. Ever since she settled here from Ghana, Nah Aje Wataki has gone on to graduate from the UI College of Business and found Nahna's African Boutique, which provides Iowa City's immigrant communities with African goods which would otherwise be hard to find in America. She has quickly become an Iowa City treasure. She reached out for me to help because you all were doing nothing to help her. You weren't responding to her emails, you weren't responding to her pleas for help. After seeing a Facebook comment, a Facebook comment that I made calling you out for this bullshit, she thought that she could help and she sent me a DM. For over a year, she has been dealing with the unreasonable antics of Alan Marks, president of Midwest Development and Investment Group and the landlord of Miss Taki's store on Riverside Drive. He has been terrible to her and failing his obligations to her both as a landlord and a fellow human being. He has been unethical, refusing to uphold his obligations according to the lease by not fixing code violations. And he has retaliated harshly whenever she has pushed for her rights as a tenant. In fact, he moved to evict her after she contacted the city to report the code violations he refused to fix. Mr. Marks has been represented by the law partner of Iowa City Council member Laura Burgis. That guy's name is Joseph Moreland. He has been harassing Miss Taki nonstop with many contradictory legal notifications and his conduct has been at best abusive and at worst benschful. Furthermore, Moreland's involvement has scared away every other lawyer Miss Taki has gone to with with one of them even saying that he is too much of a shark to go up against and they won't want to go up against his connections with you, the city establishment. Many also imply that he is such an unethical lawyer that he would be hard to beat. You know what, Councilmember Burgis? I think it's very telling to partner yourself with that kind of human garbage.
Um, it took her just about Welcome, Ken. Followed by Taylor.
Hi, uh, my name is Ken Bowen. My pronouns are he/him. I live in Iowa City and I am a proud member of Iowa Citizens for Community Improvement, Iowa CCI. Here are some of my thoughts regarding the ARP funds that will be coming to Iowa City. These ARP funds are taxpayer dollars and should be returned to the taxpayers. They should not be given to corporations or political cronies. Public money should be spent on the common good with attention given to infrastructure and relief aid. Money should go directly to the people impacted by the pandemic. Obviously, these, there are many ideas and opportunities concerning how these funds should be spent. I will touch on two of them. Ah, anyway, um, capital projects should employ Iowa workers and pay a living wage. Street repairs and public transportation are essential to promoting economic and civic recovery, expanding public bus services to include more inclusive routes, adding Sunday services and providing discounted or free fares for students and seniors. I am not sure how many of you have driven your car or ridden your bicycle across Iowa City streets, but I have been on smoother roller coasters at Adventureland. Perhaps two million dollars could be spent to eradicate the bumps, breaks, potholes and poor pavements all around Iowa City. Buses. Every successful, responsible city or metro area has an efficient system of public transportation, reducing fares and expanding routes by and plus adding Sunday service could make Iowa City a model for the rest of the state to emulate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Welcome, Taylor, followed by Patricia.
Hi there. I want to start out by saying that two minutes is not enough time. I'd also want to point out that uh this is an issue that's gathering statewide attention, given the conduct of the Des Moines City Council. And I would urge you to uh kind of check that instinct to limit our time. You've had to cut off nearly everyone tonight and that's not great. Um, I also uh want to address the situation with Nah. Uh, Mayor, you came to the People's Truth and Reconciliation Commission and you admitted that the reason that you and implied to be the the rest of council, with the exception of councillor Sully, have not so much as responded was because of conflicts of interest. Um, I believed that conflicts of interests uh were meant to be uh, you know, dealt with in in this kind of context so that you would be able to still act with integrity despite conflicts of interest. But you, if that's the case, are deliberately not helping your constituent who needs your help because of your conflicts of interest. You have chosen your interests over your constituent. Um, and there's, if you can't act with integrity, why are you on city council? Uh, if you can't, you know, put your actions where your words are in the statement that you made at the beginning of tonight's meeting, what what are you even doing here? I am tremendously concerned with the fact that you you have been aware of this and um it just wasn't wasn't enough for for you or for councillor Burgis or for the rest of council to um take meaningful action on. Uh, that's unacceptable.
Thank you, Taylor. Welcome, Patricia, followed by Barb.
Thank you. Um, would it be possible for me to pass to Emily with the Catholic Worker House?
Um, I will call her shortly.
Okay, so I'll go ahead then quickly. Um, I too um am a member of Iowa CCI's community and a member of Iowa Citizens for Community Improvement. I too want to speak about the America Recovery Plan Act and I'm here in support of the nine organization Coalition Demanding and Excluded Workers Fund. Public money should be spent for public good. It should go directly to those most impacted. No large or even small corporation should get any relief. Infrastructure projects must benefit everyday people across this city and should be publicly owned. This money should be spent in a way that advances anti-racism and creates equitable policies both for the short and long term. Any capital projects need to employ Iowa workers and pay a living wage. Relief aid should be overseen by grassroots organizations that have memberships in this community not funneled through big professional nonprofits who already receive a majority of their funding from the government resources. So let's seize this moment and do what's right for all people. Let's be transparent about it. I would also recommend an open forum opportunity for others in the community to come before you with their ideas of how the city should spend their money. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Barb. I don't see Barb any longer. I'm gonna welcome Joel, followed by Harry.
Hello, my name's Joel Gilbertson White. I live on Iowa's uh west side and I am um following up on what Reverend Meg Wagner was saying. I am with the J C I C. I would like to encourage the city to consider hiring a temporary administrative assistants to receive and process applications um for the American Rescue Plan funding um for timely distribution. And also, uh, given that the provisions of the American Rescue Act allow for direct assistance to nonprofits, we would like for you to allocate some aid for those nonprofits who primarily serve people of color in our community and who have not received a lot of financial support, including the faith communities that have primarily black members in our area, two of which have been forced to close during the pandemic and to others that are struggling financially because their members, their members are struggling. Those black churches and the mosques provide critical community care and support. And if more of them are forced to close, the quality of life in this community for many black people will be decreased. We believe that this money has potential to make a tremendous impact in Iowa City and urge you to prioritize aid to people of color most impacted by pandemic and the nonprofits and faith organizations that provide essential services to those communities. And again, um, I want to make sure that you schedule time to meet with people of color in this community who are most directly affected, um, prioritizing meeting with the people rather than meeting with the businesses, recognizing maybe there needs to be a balance, but also um that this community is ultimately about the people and when the people are driving, the businesses also will drive. Um, and then, of course, please make sure that the direct assistance that's available is easily accessible for um people so that it's um in multiple language and um people are able to get to it and know about it. Those who need it um should be able to get to it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna uh just mention that our public comments do end at seven. When we started this, I took account and I'm gonna call individuals in the following order. It will be Harry, I will recall up Barb, and then Kathy and last Emily. Welcome, Harry.
Hello, I uh, yes, I'd just also like to speak about the situation uh with Nah. Um, I just think it's absolutely disgusting that the city council like would know about this situation right here in our community where somebody, a black woman, an immigrant who owns a business in our community is being unfairly unlawfully evicted by her by her by her landlord and all this like but that the city council would do nothing. That that just absolutely disgusts me and just shows me that like it shows me that the city council and doesn't really care about these issues that they keep going on to claim about every time like things like this keep getting brought up. Um, so with that, I just uh, I would just like to echo everything that's been said uh and to also demand justice for Nah.
Thank you. Welcome, Barb, followed by Kathy.
Mayor, I, are you hear me?
Yes.
I would like to give my position to Emily because she's on a really tight uh time limit. So if I could let Emily speak on in my spot.
Um, welcome, Emily, and then we will hear from Kathy after, and that will end our public comment time.
Hi, thank you so much for letting me go. My name is Emily Sinwell and I'm a family and psychiatric nurse practitioner and I'm a Iowa City Catholic worker. I'm here with three uh workers who um would like to speak at the council. I'd like you to keep in mind that I'll be interpreting and so this takes a little extra time. And I do have three women here with me. Uh, technology is a is a barrier for a lot of folks and so um, you know, I know there's limits placed, but I've asked the council to please keep in mind that not everyone has access to computers and internet and so we are together today. So I'll go ahead and pass it on to the first person.
Hola, mi nombre es Rosa. Soy de Guatemala y estoy viviendo aquí en la casa católica.
Hi, my name is Rosa. I'm from Guatemala and I'm living in Iowa City Catholic Worker House.
Voy a contar un poco lo que pasó durante toda esta pandemia.
I'm gonna tell you a little bit about what happened during this pandemic.
Estuve trabajando en en un restaurante mexicano. Eh, desde que empezó la pandemia nos dijeron que que ya no trabajáramos. Y tiempo después nos dijeron que íbamos a regresar. Estuve trabajando. Después de esto me dijeron, me bajaron las horas.
So I was working in a restaurant during the pandemic. They lowered our hours. They let us go. They had me come back and work again.
Y hace como dos meses me despidieron porque dijeron que ya no llegaran muchos personas a comer y ya no hay mucho del negocio.
And then about two months ago, they let me go because there wasn't a lot of people and they didn't need my help anymore.
Me quedé sin trabajo y tengo un hijo de un año y estoy luchando con él ahora y no he recibido ninguna ayuda.
So I was left without work. I also have a son who's uh one year old and I'm fighting with him. I'm fighting for us.
Eh, no solo yo, yo creo que hay muchos inmigrantes como yo. Eh, no solo porque somos inmigrantes eh, no, esto no quiere decir que somos tratados de manera diferente.
Um, and I haven't received any help. It's just not me. There's several um people and uh workers that are undocumented in my possession. And it's not just because um we're immigrants that we should be treated differently.
Gracias.
Thank you, Rosa. Okay, uh, next person.
Hola, mi nombre es Ingrid. Trabajo en un hotel de limpieza.
Hi, my name is Ingrid and I work in a hotel cleaning.
Soy de Honduras. Tengo cuatro hijos nacidos aquí, ciudadanos americanos. Soy madre soltera.
Um, I'm from Honduras. I have, I'm a single mother of four children who are all born here.
Uh, mi, mi mi pregunta es que por qué no hemos recibido el cheque de estímulo eh solo por ser inmigrantes tenemos una gran diferencia y aparte de eso tenemos hijos aquí americanos y no es justo que ah nos traten diferente manera por no tener un seguro social.
So my my question is, um, why haven't we also received a stimulus just check? Just because we're immigrants doesn't mean that we should be treated any different than other people here?
So yo creo que vemos muchas personas que también necesitamos ayuda ah que no tienen por qué vernos de diferencia, diferencia diferente.
Todos estamos pasamos, hemos pasado cosas de la pandemia, viajándonos. Tenemos que salir a trabajar, no sabemos si vamos a regresar infectados o solo ya sabes.
We've all suffered the same under the same pandemic, you know, we have to leave our houses and take the risk to go work and we should all be treated the same.
Gracias, Ingrid, gracias.
I'll move on to the last person.
Hola, mi nombre es Ingrid Peldincho.
Hi, my name is Jacqueline.
Uh, hoy estoy aquí porque yo soy madre de dos hijos y soy madre soltera. Uh, durante la pandemia me despidieron rotundamente del trabajo, me quedé sin trabajo toda la pandemia hasta el día de hoy, no tengo trabajo.
I'm a single mother of two children and since the pandemic started, they let me go and to this day, I'm still not working.
Uh, me enfermé del COVID y todas esas, todas esas dos semanas que estuve enferma del COVID, mis niños y yo estuvimos en casa recuperándonos porque no podíamos pagar el hospital.
I uh was um infected by COVID. For two weeks I was at home with my children. I wasn't able to get healthcare. Uh, I wasn't able to access healthcare and I was at home this whole time.
Um, pues, uh, pienso que nosotros también tenemos, creo, los mismos derechos que otras personas, aunque seamos inmigrantes, pienso y no se nos debería de tratar con indiferencia porque siempre estamos afuera trabajando y importa nada.
Uh, we believe that we should um be given the same rights as other people, even though we're undocumented during this pandemic and receive the same support. Gracias, Jacqueline. Uh, thank you for taking that extra time to listen with interpretation taking longer. I just have a couple of things to say myself. Um, I would push for public hearings and ask that you allow lots of public hearings and allow um the people to speak. And when you, we need to um think differently um because a lot of people cannot connect to the internet. They cannot fill out online applications. They cannot, um, they don't, you know. So we really need to change our thinking um when we are deciding when to use this money. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Emily. And our last um individual that we'll hear from today is Kathy. Welcome, Kathy.
Thank you, Mayor Teague and city councillors. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. My name is Kathy Glosson. I use she/her pronouns. I live in Corleville and I'm here as president of SEIU Local 199, where we represent the healthcare professionals at university hospitals. And I'm also a member of Iowa Citizens for Community Improvement. I want to preface my remarks this evening by saying that we know and understand that cities, counties and states will have much discretion on how the millions of dollars of the American Rescue Plan money coming from the federal government can be used. You know, Iowa City is home to so many heroes, thousands of public workers, hospital and healthcare workers. You know, Iowa City is home to so many heroes, thousands of public workers, hospital and healthcare workers who've risked their lives to provide care during this pandemic. We believe strongly that the citizens of Iowa City and the people affected by the pandemic should have a voice in how the ARP funds will be distributed. An inclusive way to do this is through holding a series of public hearings where community members can offer their input. The city of Iowa City should be thinking boldly and broadly and plan now on how you'll improve the lives of those most affected. It's that simple. It just takes a strong commitment from each of you. That's why SEIU nationally and locally stands in solidarity here this evening and in cities, counties, and states across the country, working with partner organizations like CCI to ensure ARP funds go to those most impacted and affected. We believe the fund should be used for four broad purposes. One, funds should be used to help create affordable housing in various forms, including community-controlled and cooperative housing units as well as funds to provide financial assistance for those in need, many who are the invisible workforce, who are paid in cash and haven't been able to access any of the relief funds thus far. Two, the fund should support expanding access to public transportation for all who live and work in our community. Let's have transportation seven days a week for those who work weekends, for example, some of our members. The fund should also be used to provide hazard pay raises for the essential frontline heroes, including public employees, school district employees, and healthcare workers. And four, the fund should provide aspiring citizens, excluded workers, and previously incarcerated people with a portion of the economic stimulus. Make sure that they have enhanced unemployment insurance and other reparations that they've never received during this pandemic. And last but not least, in closing, I hope you've actively listened. I hope you'll.
Thank you. Thanks to everyone that was able to partake. We are at item number 10, which is our planning and zoning matters. 10A is rezoning Finkbine, an ordinance conditionally rezoned approximately 6.12 acres of land located near the intersection of Finkbine, Commuted Drive, and Marrows Avenue to medium-density multifamily residential and institutional public of the planned development overlay. This is second consideration and can I get a motion, please?
So moved, Burgus. Second, ma'am.
All right. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand and I'll call upon you. And I just wanted to remind people that it must be related to this topic. If not, I ask that you take your hands down. And I ask people to keep their comments three to five minutes. Welcome, Marlene. You're on mute.
Good evening, Mayor Teague. My comment was actually based on the open comments. It's not related to the current agenda.
Oh, no. No worries. Welcome Barb.
Yes, I'm sorry. I was also commenting on the past section and I didn't get my hand down fast enough.
All right, thank you. Anyone like to comment on item number 10A? CNO1 Council Discussion. Roll call, please.
Ma'am's?
Yes.
Sally? Sally? Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
No.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgus?
Yes.
No, you hear me now?
Yes, Sally.
No, okay.
Motion passes five to two. Item 10B, fringe area rezoning, 4809 Rapid Creek Road Northeast. Can I get a motion to approve? I'm sorry. This is a motion to approve a letter to the Johnson County Planning and Zoning Commission in support of a rezoning from county to county residential for approximately 13.07 acres of property located in an unincorporated Johnson County at 4809 Rapid Creek Road Northeast. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
So, Thomas?
Move by Thomas, seconded by Ma'am's. And staff presentation, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Council Danielle Sussman, Development Services Coordinator. Kelly, it looks like my screen sharing is disabled, so if you could enable that for me up, my slides up. There we go. Thank you. This is an application filed by MMS Consultants for the area shown in white outline here on this slide. On behalf of the, on behalf of the property owner, requesting rezoning from one county zoning designation to another county zoning designation for residential development. If rezoned, if the rezoning is ultimately approved, the applicants intend to divide the land into approximately two single-family residential lots. The slide shows the current zoning of the property. It's currently contains one single-family home and the bulk of the land is grassland and woodland cover. The two lots that are proposed would be adjacent to the Rapid Creek Road frontage. The subject property is located in fringe area A outside of the city's growth area because the property is within a two miles distance of the current city boundaries. Our Fringe Area Agreement specifies that the city makes a recommendation on this to the county for their consideration. When we review these, staff uses two criteria regarding comprehensive plan compliance and compatibility with the existing neighborhood. As I mentioned, this is subject to the fringe area agreement, which is component of our city comprehensive plan applying to land outside of our current city boundaries that we may not have otherwise had developed long-range plans for. As far as compliance with the counties, with the comprehensive plan, it is in compliance with the county's comprehensive plan shown here. The yellow being future residential suitable for future residential development and that found it in the blue green line. As far as neighborhood compatibility, requested zoning is for county zone R, which allows single-family homes on lots with a minimum area of 10,890 square feet or essentially a quarter acre. The maximum area of 1.99 acres. As I mentioned, the two lots would be along Rapid Creek Road and the remainder of the property approximately 13 acres would need to be placed into some sort of outlot according to county standards and would not be developable essentially at this time. The surrounding area is largely comprised of farmland, woodlands, and natural open spaces as well as other similar rural residential development shown in the orange boundaries here. The proposed zoning is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. As far as steps of development, we're at the rezoning stage here where the city makes a recommendation to the county. We would go through a plating process to come back to you as part of that plating process and also recommendations to county on that. Although the proposed rezoning does not directly align with the policies outlined in the adopted Fringe Area Agreement, staff did recommend approval of the rezoning for the following reasons. The proposed rezoning is consistent with county's future land use map and the staff is working with county planning staff to update our Fringe Area Agreement, which as it is currently drafted would be consistent with the policy direction that is being proposed here with this rezoning. At its April 1st meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted seven to zero, cur with snatch recommendation and forwarded this to you with a recommendation of approval. That includes staff report and then Kathy's or questions.
Any questions for Danielle? All right. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand and I'll call upon you. If you're on the phone line, press star nine, which I don't see anyone on the phones right now. Welcome Sandy. We ask that you keep your comments three to five minutes.
Hi, this is Sandy Stile from MMS Consultants. If you just have any technical questions, I can answer them now.
I'm not hearing any from council. Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you.
All right, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Sally?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgus?
Yes.
Ma'am's?
Yes.
Motion passed to seven to zero. Item number 11, sale of 2131 Taylor Drive. This is a resolution authorizing conveyance of a single-family home located at 2131 Taylor Drive. I'm gonna open the public hearing. And staff presentation. Welcome, Erica.
Hey, Erica Kubli with Neighborhood Services. 2131 Taylor Drive is the third home to be sold through the South District Home Ownership Program. The city acquired the duplex for $125,610 or $62,805 per unit in November of 2019. Completed substantial rehab and then converted the property to a two-unit condominium to sell to income-eligible home buyers. Improvements include a new roof, updated kitchen and bathroom, interior paint and trim, and a new sidewalk. We also added a bedroom to the basement to make the home a three-bedroom unit. Sustainability improvements include a high-efficiency furnace and air conditioner, air-source heat pump water heater, energy star-rated appliances, new windows and doors, and long-life cycle flooring. The sales price was set at $133,500, which is the acquisition cost plus renovation cost as well as any carrying cost that the city has incurred. Of that amount, $35,000 was funded by local dollars and will be provided as a conditional mortgage on the property that will be forgiven over 10 years as long as the buyer continues to live there. The buyer is also eligible for up to $25,000 in down payment assistance and closing cost assistance through the federal home program. The remainder will be financed by a local lender. Monthly housing payments are expected to be around $600, which is well below the home fair market rent. It's actually about, it's actually less than half of the home fair market rent for a three-bedroom unit. And then the family has lived in the neighborhood for two years and they are first-time home buyers. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Erica? Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand. CNO1, I'm gonna close. Oh, welcome Sarah.
Hi, council and staff. I just wanted to weigh in. This is Sarah Baron from the Affordable Housing Coalition to say that this continues to be an exciting program, looking forward to future investment in this neighborhood and hopefully growing it to other places, especially through partnerships with other nonprofits as we continue to grow. And also just remind you that this program is what it is today because you did get great feedback from the neighborhood about what they needed and wanted. And looking forward to incorporating more of that feedback into our affordable housing plans going forward. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand. CNO1, I am going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
Second, Weiner?
Move by Sally, seconded by Weiner. And council discussion.
I'm really excited to see this and first of all, I'd like to offer congratulations to the new homeowners, the buyer of this property. I've been excited about this program all along and my hope is for continued success and positive results for other of our South District program properties. It's great to see.
All right, this is an exciting project, so very happy to see it. Roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Burgus?
Yes.
Ma'am's?
Yes.
Sally?
Yes.
Motion passed to seven to zero. Item number 12 is establishing urban revitalization tax abatement area. This is a resolution adopting highway commercial urban revitalization plan. I'm gonna open the public hearing. And welcome Wendy Ford.
Good evening, council. I'm Wendy Ford, the Economic Development Coordinator. The proposed highway commercial urban revitalization plan designates areas of the city along Highway 6 and Highway 1 and corridors in which certain building improvements or new construction may be eligible for limited property tax exemption for a period of three years. The plan uses an economic development tool called Urban Revitalization Tax Exemption, which would allow for a 100% property tax exemption on new value created by improvements to existing or new buildings on qualifying properties for three years. Neither the value of the land nor the original value of the building is eligible for this exemption and only improvements generating at least a 15% increase in building value are eligible. The areas in the plan are generally older commercial areas along Highway 6 and Highway 1 with local, usually small businesses that have not had access to economic development incentives in the past and generally do not attract the kinds of projects that would be appropriate for tax increment financing. I'm gonna try and share my screen to show you a map. And presentation view. Okay. So this is not a very legible map. And I'm gonna move from this one to one that actually is a little more legible, but I wanted to show this one to you to give you a scope of the width and breadth of the areas. The urban revitalization zones would be in the red areas as you see here, beginning at the left with about the intersection of Highway 1 and 218 and then that's west and then moving east all the way over toward the what we've called the Sycamore and First Avenue area. But let me move into a more defined map here. This is the far west area where you can see the intersection of Highway 1 with 218 and these commercial areas that surround that intersection here. Moving to the middle of that wide swath of area, this is Zone E as we call it, which is around the Walmart area and Rupert Road. Lots of small businesses and small parcels in that area as well. And then finally, these two areas which are, which encompass the Highway 6 area south of Riverfront Crossings and by the way, not including any of the Riverfront Crossings urban renewal area. So this is a completely separate area that would offer incentives to businesses that don't necessarily, that can't enjoy them otherwise. And then finally, to the far east on the right, Zone G, that is the Iowa City Marketplace area as it's known now and several commercial lots in that general neighborhood. So I'll move back to the big picture while I talk. You can just kind of take a look at that. This economic development incentive is only available to commercially, would only be available to commercially taxed properties. In the case of a multi-residential property where a portion is taxed commercial, only the commercial portion of the building would be eligible. Before beginning any improvements which may qualify for the tax exemption, property owners must apply online through the city's website. And I do have that website in the lower-left corner of this slide. It is And that УРП is Urban Revitalization Plan. To be considered eligible for property tax exemption, the council must approve the projects and all improvements must increase the actual value of the property, not including the land value, by at least 15%. The city assessor determines whether a project meets this threshold once improvements have been made. Questions about whether proposed improvements will meet the 15% increase or not should be directed to the city assessor Brad Comer. The Highway Commercial Urban Revitalization Plan would be in effect for 10 years after its implementation, should you do that tonight. Prior steps to establishing this commercial urban revitalization plan include the adoption of a resolution of necessity, which was done March 2nd, and a mailing of the notice of this public hearing to all property owners and occupants of those properties, which was done the week of March 15th. Staff recommends approval of this plan because it aligns with the IC 2030 Comprehensive Plan and the 2021 Strategic Plan, which both promote an inclusive and resilient economy throughout the city in part by encouraging healthy, diverse, and sustainable economic activity, taking steps to invigorate neighborhood commercial districts, and supporting the growth and promotion of locally-owned businesses and women and minority-owned businesses. Those were the extent of my comments and I'd be. Those were the extent of my comments and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you had them.
Wendy, with this program, this is John. Are there examples of its use in any other cities in Iowa? I'm just not clear how actively implementing this program. But if they have, are there some excess success stories already out there?
Well, in answer to the first question, yes, it is being used in other cities. Davenport, it's used widely across the community and also in Dubuque. However, I can't cite specific success stories. This is an incentive that is geared toward folks who would make investments in their buildings that would not necessarily qualify for larger incentives. It just exempts the tax that would be due on the improvements because of the improvements they made and maybe enough for somebody to make the decision to go ahead and do those improvements that they had been considering for a while.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone from the public like to join in on this discussion? If so, please raise your hand and I'll call upon you and I ask that you keep your comments three to five minutes. Welcome Charlie, followed by Dan.
Thank you, Mayor Teague. Just very briefly, the property taxes that are exempt or would be exempt under this proposal, that's the city-assessed property tax. Is that correct? Not the school district or county or other assessments? Am I correct about that?
We ask that you just speak to the council.
I'm sorry Bruce. Okay, perhaps the, the staff or someone could get back to us at some point in the future to let us know, okay?
Yep, we'll reach out to you. Thank you so much. Welcome Dan, followed by Allah.
All right, so if I understand correctly, the point of this resolution is to use the power of city government to benefit the businesses and business owners along Highway One and Six. So since we're discussing helping businesses in that area, let's discuss how the city council and city officials are ignoring business owners there who have already reached out for help, specifically the case of Na'ajewa Taki who runs Na'na's African Boutique along Highway Six. I find it disgusting that you sit here talking about, oh, let's give business owners tax incentives for improving their businesses after you have continually ignored pleas from a black female immigrant business owner trying desperately to save her business in that area. If you're so concerned with revitalizing businesses along Highway Six, we need to talk about the ways this body has failed those businesses first. Also, I would be remiss if I didn't mention how the mayor's opening statements about how we embrace diversity. That's not true. In this case illustrates that perfectly. Na'has been dealing with a landlord trying to evict her for standing up for her rights as a tenant. The landlord, Alan Marks, of the Midwest Development and Investment Group, moved to evict her after she reported code violations to the city that he was refusing to fix. Furthermore, he is accusing her of failing to pay rent despite the fact that he refused to accept her payments, which was submitted on time. No, this is relevant. This is relevant because we're talking about businesses along Highway Six. This is how to improve businesses, Mayor. And you, City Council.
Welcome.
Well, I'm just gonna go over what Dan was just trying to say. So hello, City Council. I'm here again to remind you all day in and day out that you do not intend to serve and my first case will be demanding justice for Na'. And sad to see that Na'has reached out to you all and nothing was done to help her except Mazza here was the only one who reached back. And then I also want to talk about.
This is a public.
It's a public hearing which is talking about businesses.
Yeah, it's.
It's a business. Is it a business or not?
This is. Abatement area.
Is it a business on Highway Six or not, Mayor? Because I just want to know if I'm incorrect on this. Is it a business on Highway Six?
Do you want to speak on this?
I am speaking on a business that's on Highway Six. And as I'm continuing, I want to say that her landlord has continued to violate her and even when reporting him and trying to exercise her right, you all still have not done anything. It is because it's a business on Highway Six.
Thank you, Allah. Would anyone else like to address this topic? Seeing no one, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Mims.
Second, Sorry.
All right, and council discussion.
I was curious about, I guess this is a question, but the, the question that Charlie raised about the which taxes that it is abating, if staff has an answer to that.
Hi, my understanding is that it is all of the taxes.
Just to clarify that, it's, it's the taxes on the new improvement. So if you have a, a building that's generating a hundred thousand dollars in taxes, say, and the improvements take that to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we're just talking about a three-year abatement of that fifty thousand. But it is, it would impact all of the taxing bodies for that period of time. So the, the state, and that was one of the factors that we weighed internally, the state code allows to up to ten years of abatement. And you can do that on various scales, sliding scales if you wish, but we opted to keep that term as short as possible to where we thought it would incentivize the reinvestment in those properties, but also return a higher base to all the taxing bodies in as quick as time as possible.
Thank you.
I'm supportive of this. I think one thing we hear frequently from business owners is they put a lot of money into their building. You know, and they may be struggling and trying to improve their building and their place of business so they can employ people. And then they put tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars and then immediately the taxes get jacked up. So the idea of potentially up to a three-year abatement if they're doing enough improvement in that facility, I think is a good way to incentivize that improvement and hopefully to keep those businesses and that employment here.
All right, here are no other comments. Roll call, please.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Fergus.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Soli.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Motion passed a seven to zero. Item number thirteen, alcohol in park shelters. This is the ordinance amending Title Four, entitled alcoholic beverages, entitled ten, entitled public ways and property to allow alcohol in park shelters. This is second consideration. Could I get a motion, please? Some moved by Fergus, seconded by Thomas. And would anyone from the public like to discuss this topic? If so, please raise your hand. Welcome Dan, please keep your comments three to five minutes.
Hi, so I was drinking, drinking a beer in City Park the other day, talking with my friends about the case of Na'ajewa Taki. And we were just talking about, number one, how cool it is drinking alcohol in the park at shelters. And number two, how messed up it is that city council is refusing to help their constituents who reach out for help. And that groups like the Freedom Riders have to get justice for those people while the city council does nothing. So while we were sipping our beer in the park shelters, talking about how that should be legal too, um, we were also discussing the fact that it's really messed up that political connections between a lawyer, landlord, and the city council is allowed to exist. So anyways, I had, I was drinking Blue Moon, which I mean should be totally legal in park shelters. And it's, it's the most astounding thing that my friend and I agreed on about Na's case is the fact that Mayor Teague, you showed up to the TRC and we're talking, you're the most powerful person in the city. And yet when Na confronted you, you said, oh, I can listen with empathy. But you basically said that was the extent that you could do. She reached out to you over a year ago and you ignored her emails and you didn't even check out, check on her to see how she was doing. She messaged me out of the blue. She was a total stranger, Mayor. And yet I wanted to make, hearing her story, what she shared with you in her email, that I don't understand how someone could read that and not reach out and do anything in their power to help her. It technically, it's a city issue, so you should be able to do it because it was about city code violations.
Thank you, Dan. All right, so public, we have to have topics from the public, discussions at hand. If you wish to talk to the city council about something, there's other avenues to do that. We're gonna continue. Anyone else from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Fergus.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Soli.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes. Motion passed a seven to zero. Item number fourteen, cable franchise telecommunications. Ordinance amending Title Twelve, entitled Franchise, Chapter Four, entitled Cable Television, to repeal the cable television franchise ordinance. This is first consideration. Could I get a motion, please?
So moved, Weiner.
Fergus.
Moved by Weiner, seconded by Fergus. And welcome Ashley Monroe. Are you gonna speak to us?
I will. So in two thousand and seven, the, the state established a statewide franchise for cable TV providers. And in two thousand and eighteen, the city's cable franchise or, or local franchise agreement with MediaCom expired. They operates, they operate now pursuant to the state franchise. It's unlikely that they will return. Part of the state franchise requires the, the establishment as well of a table, cable television commission and the council in recent years has asked of the telecommunications commission after the MediaCom franchise expiration to look into, for example, community-wide broadband and other funding mechanisms. And they've done so. Their report is included with the information packet. And with this repeal and the ordinance, they, it would disband the telecommunications commission as well as the cable franchise. So I'll take any questions.
Here are no questions.
Mary, I did have one quick question. In the memo that was presented, Ashley, in mentioning the, the purposes of the ordinance and then the role that the commission served, one of those things was resolving disputes between the cable operator and consumers. Will our cable TV people still be taking complaints, helping resolve those, or is that also going away?
That, that function stays with staff. It's a regular duty of theirs. We frequently send any concerns by, by residents or, or anyone with concerns about telecommunications services to our staff. And they have various connections and other resources to help work through those issues. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
All right, thank you. And would anyone from the public like to discuss this topic? Please raise your hand and I'll call upon you. And we ask that you keep your comments three to five minutes and we ask that it also be based on this topic. Thank you. Welcome Patricia, followed by Dan.
Yes, I'm a little bit confused. I'm sorry, I did not read the, any information about what was gonna be on the agenda, but so the telecommunications commission is gonna be dissolved, MediaCom, your, your thing with MediaCom is gonna go away. So what does that really mean to the public?
And we can reach back out to you, Patricia. Maybe we could have.
Nobody can answer that right now?
This is a time for you to speak to the council on your concern on this item.
Well, I'm concerned that, that we're losing something and nobody can explain to me what's going on. I find that a little bit odd.
Anything else you would like to say, Patricia?
Nope.
Thank you. Welcome Dan.
Hi, so on, you mayor can open up public comment at the end of this meeting to allow us to discuss the case of Na'ajewa Taki. Or I can just rant about my cell phone, talking to her.
Thank you, Dan. Anyone else like to address this topic? Seeing no one, council discussion.
Um, maybe if we could, I don't know, I just want to acknowledge this is sort of an end of an era, right? I was actually on the task force in two thousand and seven before the statewide franchising bill was adopted. And part of that was what spurred me to want to go to law school when I sort of saw how, how all that went down. And, and I think as far as the impact of the public, you know, it's, we haven't had a local franchise with MediaCom for three years coming up this summer. And so we have, we lost all regulatory authority at that point in time. Most of it had already been stripped away in, with the statewide franchising legislation. And so I think that, you know, as staff also pointed out in their memo, should a cable operator seek a city franchise in the future, it could do so. But the current ordinance wouldn't really be applicable to the technologies that would be offered at that time and the federal regulations that have changed as well. So this is kind of a legacy thing as far as I understand it. Yeah, it is, it's, it's kind of too bad to see it go certainly, but it's not, it's not letting go of something that we actually can maintain any control over.
Thank you for that explanation. Any other comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Weiner.
Yes.
Fergus.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Soli.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Motion passed a seven to zero. Item number fifteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty, twenty-two-one, gold bonds by bidding procedure. This is a resolution directing the advertisement for sale of eleven million three hundred and twenty-five thousand general obligation bonds, series twenty-two-one, and improving electronic bidding procedures and distribution of the preliminary official statement. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Mims.
Second, Soli.
All right, staff presentation.
And I'll just have a brief explanation of what this is. This resolution approves the sale documents, knows the preliminary official statement and this is the documents that are sent out to potential bidders on the city's general obligation bonds. And it also approves the bidding procedures that will be used to bid those bonds. And that sale date will be May fourth and that night of May fourth will bring those results back to the council for approval. And this resolution basically sends these documents out to begin that beginning bidding process. And I can try to answer any questions if you have any.
Hearing none. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing no one, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Burgis?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Motion passed to seven to zero. We are at item number sixteen. We have, this is council appointments. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be eighteen years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. We have three that we have to consider to tonight. We have the Board of Adjustments. With one none. Gender balance. We have the Human Rights Commission with one non gender balance. And we have the Senior Center Commission. And that is with one. Consideration and I and it also has no gender balance. All right, so I think how we'll do this is. I'll kind of just have, we'll start with the board of adjustments. And then work our way down and we'll just get resident. Council. Recommendations kind of tallied. And then we'll make one vote at the end. There is only one applicant. For the Board of Adjustment. I know that we've had this discussion before where. At least I I've looked at, you know, the applicant applicant that is present. And I personally just want to wait until we get another applicant.
I I would agree, Mr. Mayor. I actually had thought that we'd request more information to Mr. Hadley. And I'd actually sent him an email since we have email addresses and contact info. And I requesting, you know, just some information for him and what he. What his understanding was of of the role of the Board of Adjustment. And I had not heard back from him, so I'm I'm not really comfortable at this time yet making making an appointment.
I would support waiting as well.
I see heads nodding. Okay. All right, we'll wait on that one. So may, yes, so then we're going to go to Human Rights Commission. There is one. That we have to fill there.
No, Mayor, I'm sorry. It's time for us to break fast, you know, I will be away for five minutes.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yes.
I would just like to say that what an incredible number of applicants for this one position and. And such a very diverse group. I I was very impressed and and I'm sure that any of these applicants. Would be well suited for this commission because it's a very important commission for the community. But I would like again to. Recommend that Dan Daniel Daly be appointed. Dan is a lifelong, in fact, sixty seven years member of the Iowa City community. And a longtime advocate for social justice. He has made it a point to stand up for people, whether they are workers, immigrants, or people of color. It's it's not unusual to see Dan at various rallies. And I just believe that he would be an excellent fit for the Human Rights Commission.
Yeah, we definitely have. An incredible wealth of people. It's 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 amazing the the. What the diversity and the and the qualifications that people have brought to this. I reached out to to Stephanie. Who staffs the Human Rights Commission to to ask what what representation she believes may be missing from the commission at this point. What she suggested was indigenous, Asian, or Hispanic. I looked through this incredible wealth of material. The person who. Who I came on that I thought would be a good fit is Tony Sivanthapanis. And it seems very very active in the community. And also, I think, bring is lotion also brings and and different perspective.
I would agree with that, Janice.
Tony was actually one of my was my selection, and I think. He's very active in the community. He's also. He identifies as Asian, and so. One of the things that I know about Tony is that he has been involved. In the community on so many different levels and advocating for human rights for on on on. Many, many. In in many, many different ways, and so I would support Tony for this appointment.
I would also support Tony.
Okay, well, we have four. There. So Tony will be appointed to Human Rights Commission. And then we have the Senior Center. There's one with none. No gender balance. Are there any recommendations?
I felt that Jeannie Beckman had more of a sense of the charge for the commission. They both were familiar with the senior center, but I I believe that she had more of a sense of of what they what. What their charge is and what they need to accomplish. But I'm open.
I was leaning toward Jeannie as well.
I was too.
Yep, I can support Jeannie, and I'm seeing some heads in support. All right. Great, well, we have. Two individuals that we're going to appoint. And then we will, for the Board of Adjustments, we're going to. Just delay on that appointment tonight and ask staff to repost. So can I get a motion to approve? And Tony's last name, I am so sorry, I counsel Weiner, you did well. So I'm going to have you announce the name of our Human Rights Commission appointment, Tony.
Tony Sivanthapanis. I actually reached out to him and asked him how he pronounces it, so that's mine.
Great, great. And then that's for the Human Rights Commission. And then for the Senior Senator Commission, we will appoint Jenny Beckman. Can I get a motion to approve?
I move, Mims.
Second, Burgis.
All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? All right, motion passes. Fixed. With one absent. All right, we are at our announcements of vacancies previous. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be eighteen years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. We have the Airport Commission, one vacancy to fill a four year term. Community Police Review Board at large, one vacancy to fill a four year term. Community Review Board. Current or former peace officer. One vacancy to fill a four year term. Historic Preservation Commission at large, one vacancy to fill a three year term. Historic Preservation Commission, College Green, one vacancy to fill a three year term. Historic Preservation Commission, East College Street, one vacancy to fill an expired term plus a three year term. Historic Preservation Commission, Wood Lawn, one vacancy to fill an expired term plus a three year term. Housing and Community Development Commission, three vacancies to fill a three year term. Our Library Board of Trustees, three vacancies to fill a three. Three vacancies to fill a six year term. Parks and Recreation Commission, one vacancy to fill an expired term. Planning and Zoning Commission, two vacancies to fill a five year term. Telecommunications Commission, two vacancies to fill a three year term. Applications must be received by five P M Tuesday, May eleventh, twenty twenty one. Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five year term. Board of Appeals, licensed electrician, one vacancy to fill a five year term. Historic Preservation Commission, North Side, one vacancy to fill a three year term. Telecommunications Commission, one vacancy to fill a three year term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. We are at item number eighteen. And this is community. We're going to have U I S G, Ryan. Yes, welcome.
Good evening, council. First, I have just a couple of updates. The Presidential Search Committee continues to host the candidates for president of the University of Iowa. The three candidates that have been announced and visited campus so far are Hari Osowski. Dean of Penn State Law and the Penn State School of International Affairs. Barbara Wilson, Executive Vice President and Vice President for Academic Affairs for the University of Illinois System. And Wendy Hensel, Provost and Senior Vice President for Academic Affairs at Georgia State University. The fourth and final candidate will be announced tomorrow morning. And we'll visit campus starting Thursday morning through Friday. You can find their bios at presidentialsearch.u Iowa.edu. And if you're interested in attending forum for the fourth candidate, it will be available online. And it'll be Thursday at three thirty P M. You can also access the recordings of the first three forums as well. Now, I want to recognize that tonight is my last council meeting as the USG City Liaison. I started as Deputy City Liaison over a year ago in February of twenty twenty. And little did I know that I would enter the city liaison position at the beginning of a global pandemic. Council meetings took to Zoom and the university shut down. Since that time, I've had the honor to work on a variety of city issues on the behalf of students. A few of these included asking the city to provide utilities relief for student renters. Voicing student concerns on issues of racial justice and policing. Working to keep students safe during COVID nineteen. Sustainability requirements, new developments, and affordable housing for students. I've worked with counselors and city staff on these issues, and I'm honored to have had that opportunity. This position has taught me just how important local government is, and I am grateful for all that I have learned. I will continue to be a part of the undergraduate student government this coming year, and I hope to be able to stay involved in a lot of these issues. My Deputy City Liaison, Anna Van Hookelum, will take over my role come May first. And I am so excited for her to continue our work from this last year. She will do an excellent job. I will send a letter to council in the next week announcing both the new city liaison and deputy city liaison as the executive positions are interviewing this week. I thank you all for the lessons and knowledge that you have given me and for the kindness and respect you have shown Anna and me and USG overall in all the issues we have worked on. Students are a major part of Iowa City, and our voices are important when it comes to so many city issues. I wish you all the best of luck going forward. USG is excited to continue its work for the city. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Ryan, for all of your hard work. And wish you the best in your endeavors as you move on. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Brian, I just, I'm sorry that you came in at the beginning of a pandemic. And, you know, and I've had to have this kind of experience where we couldn't all get to know you and you to know us a lot better when we could. Visit before meetings and after meetings and that sort, because I know that's been really, I think, helpful to the U I S G liaison in the past. And have more direct interaction with staff, et cetera. So. It's unfortunate, but I think you have certainly done an excellent job and made the best of the circumstances. And thank you for your service and all the best to you as you go forward.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you in particular, Ryan, for your for working together on pandemic issues over Zoom. Really, really consequential to be able to commit to coordinate between. Council, student government, and so many other entities here. So thank you very much for that. And I also wanted to mention, I think that maybe we as a council should consider reopening community comment.
Items, I don't think we all been in. This is a public comment now. You know, I guess usually from my understanding, if the city attorney can correct me. That people can speak during this time as well.
Yeah, I think it's always been based on the council. It is at our discretion. So if people are. Supportive of it, we can certainly open it up.
Yeah, because it it, Mayor, I just mean like on that, in the say a public comment. And I maybe we don't have this happening all the time. I remember, you know, our previous mayor, he was allowing some folks during this time to speak.
Typically, the way it has worked is if we have run out of time. Right. At earlier comment, then we have allowed comment at the end. And I do believe that we may have run out of time earlier tonight. So I would agree that if there are people still on who want to comment, then I think we should open it back up for a little bit.
Great.
Yeah, Susan, that was my understanding, too, that I think that's in the past years that we've always done is overflow. If there if if not everyone had a chance to talk, the earlier public comment time. This could be some additional time for those who hadn't had a chance to talk.
Great. So I'm going to ask for anyone who haven't had a chance to speak to raise your hand. That was during the public comment section at the beginning of our meeting. And I'm going to welcome David. And we ask that everyone keep their comments to two minutes.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thanks, everyone. My name is David Goodner with the Catholic Worker, speaking on behalf of the Excluded Workers Fund. We're in receipt of the downtown COVID nineteen recovery brief plan written by the downtown district and the city manager. This plan better not have been put together with the federal recovery aid money in mind, as the downtown district lobbyist indicated earlier in this meeting that it was. Because how public money is spent needs to be decided in public. After an inclusive and transparent citizens input and review process. Not negotiated between government and big business behind closed doors ahead of time. We shouldn't have to wonder who city government works for. It's also hard to take the downtown district's plan to allegedly support BIPOC businesses seriously. Given the disgraceful addiction issue facing an African refugee business owner that the Iowa Freedom Riders lifted up today and yesterday. It's a sleight of hand to steal public relief money meant for the working poor and funnel it to the same business interests that always get it under the ruse of helping people of color. But the key line in the downtown district report is worth reading out loud, and I quote. It's highly likely that while the economy will return, there may be a significant oversupply of built space. For second story commercial downtown with this trend on end quote. In other words, we can throw money at downtown businesses until we're blue in the face, but it's not going to create any new jobs. If economic behavior is permanently changed because of the pandemic. It would be far better spent on direct aid to those who have been left behind. Not on more tax breaks for business owners and homeowners who don't need it. Thank you.
Thank you, David. I'm going to call. Barb, I can't remember, did you speak during? The public comment, or did you give your opportunity to Emily?
She gave her time to Emily, sorry, Mayor.
Okay, welcome, Barb.
Thank you, Mayor. I will speak this time. So I'm Barb Stenerson. I'm a. Physical therapist that works for U I H C and also a proud member of S E I U and C C I. And I'm going to try to speak to a real specific group of people for the Excluded Workers Fund. And that's the essential workers at the hospital because that's that's me. And that's where I've been for this last seventeen months during this pandemic. And I've got just three things I wanted to mention about what it's been like. Working as an essential worker through all of this. There's been, first of all, financial stresses. We were forced to take furloughs. We gave up vacation time. We've been working many, many people there, been working very long hours and often working in areas they aren't even comfortable with. Because people were moved around without any consideration for their area of expertise. And second of all, there were physical stresses. Working with COVID patients is very time consuming. Especially so many of them were so critically ill, you know, putting on this P P E and taking it off. I just, I can't even explain to you what a day is like wearing that garb and and trying to work with it on also. Also, the staff was, there was a staff shortage and. Even though which the furlough added to added to, and so it was very difficult to find people, you know, to help with. A lot of the tasks that we would do as a physical therapist up on the floors. The last thing was emotional stress, and that is something that's still going on. Death. I mean, one of the reasons I became a physical therapist is that I, you know, usually. Predominantly work with people who are getting better. And it was just a day in and day out of people dying, young and old. And I just, I don't know really how to even stress what that that does to workers over time.
Thank you, Barb. Thank you, Barb. Yep. I'm gonna welcome Allah.
Hello. Once again, I also wanna like clarify, like, what's the thing with the two minutes? Because before you said two minutes, and then you said thirty minutes, five minutes, and then you said two minutes. So I just wanna know if there's gonna be any clarification in the future. And again, I wanna bring attention to Naa in her case again. And I also wanna make it clear that the government does not intend to serve. So you all are more than welcome to come show up at the People's Truth and Reckoning Commission, hosted by IFR before the people, by the people, and run by the people. Um, I also wanna take into consideration to also say that the City Council has also ignored Chris Kelly's case as well. So it's two black people, and it took until Maza here to actually open up this discussion too. So it was like up to a black woman again to open up a space for people to speak. It's just so sad that black women just have to do everything and showcase everything, just to showcase that they are here for the people. And again, I do wanna also talk about the Iowa's, the Iowa CCI. And the money, I, I'm so confused as to how this money is used, and no one's even like talking about it outside of how it could be used for the people. Like, that makes no sense to me how everyone, like, you all decided that you wanted to do whatever you all wanted to do with the money, but we cannot decide, and we are the ones who are actually like your constituents, aren't we not? So I just wanna also say that you all have taken a lot of time. I'm not taking it to, I'm not taking accountability for a lot of things that you do, especially I'm going back to Nada's case and the Chris Kelly case. And people have been wanting, people have been searching and looking elsewhere to find help because the government is not intended to serve, and you guys have not been doing your purpose. That's all I had to say. And again, just clarify the timing because it makes no sense how some people could speak two minutes and some people could speak three to five. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Charlie, followed by John Doe's.
Thank you, Mayor Teague. I just wanted to follow up with the Johnson County Interfaith Coalition's groups recommendation or ask that the council engage primarily with people affected by the pandemic and nonprofit organizations that have been working with people affected by the pandemic in devising your ideas and your plans about how to use the city's allocation of the American Rescue Plan funding. Well, I admire the work that City Manager Jeff Roon has done and the council's done in many areas. I, I think it's a bit perplexing about why the, why there would have been steps taken at this point to work with a, with a segment of the community, the business community, and developing an actual plan to use these funds before consulting widely with a nonprofit and the people directly affected by the pandemic and their, their ideas about how to use these funds. So I think that that could be corrected easily by going ahead with, with engaging with these two groups, people directly affected by the pandemic and the nonprofit community that have been dealing with the, with the effects of the pandemic. And I'm sure you will make good decisions. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Welcome, John.
Hi, my name is John Doe. Part of the reason why you've been pushed tonight so hard is because Naa turned to you for help, and you turned your back on her. She was ignored by you and turned away by the legal system because of the fact that her landlord is represented by a member of this body. You are the people who should have been there for her, and it didn't happen. And you need to be called out for it, and you've been, all night, you've been suppressing talk about this. From the two minutes to the discussion about Highway Six, you have been suppressing this discussion. And even with the public comment at the end, you have been saying, oh, if you've talked before during public comment, you can't talk again. Well, the thing is, you haven't allowed people to fully talk about the issues that they came prepared to talk five minutes about. It's ridiculous. On, so I'm gonna just go, and Dan is my cousin, and he gave me his statement. So the lawyer for Naa's landlord is Joseph Moreland, who is the law partner of.
Excuse me. Are you Dan?
No, I'm John. But so, the law partner is Councilmember Laura Burgess. It's incredibly ironic that this part, that this council is working on an item to improve businesses along Highway Six, when the law firm of one of your members is profiting from the destruction of a business along that stretch of road. And as was said at the last meeting, Laura Burgess, you are the worst kind of neoliberal. On one hand, you claim to oppose racism, racism, and support racial equality and injustice. But on the other hand, your law firm enables racist and predatory landlords to go after minority businesses. It was very big of you to provide Naa a list of lawyers who she could hire. However, if you had followed through with her, you would have realized that they were too scared of your scumbag law partner and his political connections to take up Naa's case. However, you never checked up with her to see how she was doing. This applies to the rest of the Iowa City Council too, the majority of whom ignored Naa's email. Mayor Teague, thank you for showing up to the People's TRC on Thursday night. But that's about the best thing that can be said about that. Naa confronted you and asked about why you hadn't reached out to her, and you said that you were, quote, aware of it. It's good to be aware of something, but given that you didn't reach out to Naa or do anything substantive to help her up until the time she confronted you, I must say that your awareness is pretty worthless. You are one of the most powerful people in this city, and yet you, the most you could offer Naa was listening with empathy. Let me tell you, Naa reached out to me because she saw a Facebook comment, I made, describing how the Iowa City Government talks.
Welcome, Mohammed.
Hello, Mayor Teague. Thank you very much for recognizing me. I wish I'd been able to come to the meeting earlier. I was just kinda doing some extra work, but anyways, I'll make this very, as quick as possible. When it comes to Naa's situation, it came to my attention last week on Monday. She had reached out to my mother, who's, we have known her since two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. And my family has purchased many goods from her, and my mom's closest friends have as well, and I know many others that are in the same boat. And when my mom told me that she needed to speak with me, I wasn't really sure what it was going to be about, but then when she did talk to me, we spent probably close to an hour on the phone and just hearing about the situation, which is very disheartening to know that something such as this was going on in our community. And I don't know exactly why the situation has played out the way it has, because I can't infer anyone's intent. And in terms of Counselor Burgess's involvement, I know that she obviously cannot speak on the case or also speak more directly with Naa as well without consent because she also is the representative of the other person involved. And just from what I know so far, I've reached out to multiple people in the city who have told me that they will be sure that this is prioritized and properly looked into and handled. And I do trust that they will do so as they have contacted and are going through that process. But I will also be working to ensure that all of that is followed through with and that we just get as much clarity on the situation as possible. In addition, I've been hearing about other businesses in the area that are facing eviction from landlords as well from their buildings being bought out by new ownership, and that ownership then jacking up rent prices sometimes as high as a hundred and forty percent. And while I do understand the current economic landscape and the rise in property values due to, you know, the actions of the Fed and the money printing and things of that nature, what I just don't understand is why this is all being passed off to all of these hard-working small business owners that helped to make Iowa City what it is. I see in the.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else like to address? All right, seeing no one, we are moving on. We are. Oh, I do see one. All right. Welcome, Nana. You're on mute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so my name is Ma Ajewa Taki, and I'd like to take this time to, first of all, thank each and every one of you who has spoken out for me. I really do appreciate this. I reached out to the city, city council, city mayor, city manager, about fifteen different people on the eighteenth of March and reported my story. I've been persecuted by this landlord, by Joseph Moreland, and I can't imagine that Laura Burgess has not seen any of the communications. And for you to sit there and just act like this doesn't matter, or it's a conflict of interest, the, the only conflict of interest is that I'm not able to access my mayor, my city manager, assistant city manager, city attorney. I can't access any one of you just because of this connection. So it's not fair to make us think that you're there for us and the constant exploitation using the words "social justice." Look it up and actually practice that, this, the, the exploitation of the immigrants and just people of color. It's just, it's too much. You know, you, you've, none of you have been a young African woman. Maza here has, but the rest of you haven't. So you don't know what it feels like. The community is looking up to you. I have to keep a bold face every single day, knowing that is Joe gonna send another email lying about things? Is my landlord gonna send another email lying about things? Currently, they're saying that I have not paid rent. There's an article on CBS that says, and I quote, "Taki didn't pay her rent." "I have attempted to pay rent five times. I've made over forty-four different rent payments." "When I'm in China, Dubai, Ghana, Senegal, wherever in the world, I've paid this man." And Joe boldly says that I have failed to pay rent. And Laura, you can't just sit there and pretend it's a conflict of interest. This is about ethics. This is about just human, you know, just, just being human. You know, how do you go ahead and watch this happening in your office? But then you, on your Facebook, you're saying things about quoting Dr. Martin Luther King, saying things about we, we remember the silence of our friends and, you know, not remembering the voices of our enemies. And that's what, that's what was just so surprising. You know, you're quoting all these things, you're marching, you're saying you support diversity, all, all these things that all of you say, but this was a perfect opportunity. At least you could have responded to my email and just said, "Thank you for your email. We really don't care about your situation and all the best." I would have actually respected and appreciated that versus the silence.
Thank you. All right, anyone else like to address this topic? And actually, I had just closed that, that opportunity, so I'm going to move on to the next item, which is number nineteen, and this is Councilmember Reports on Various Meetings, Attended Upcoming Meetings, Community Events, and Items of Interest.
I would just mention with our Friday Better Together meetings, there was a question earlier about COVID vaccines and kind of where we were headed with that. And one of the announcements last Friday was Dr. Rick Dobbins and Dr. Brian Kerschling are working to really organize a marketing, public outreach campaign as it gets harder to fill some of these COVID vaccine appointments. Really trying to, you know, to get that message out to people in our community, the importance of getting vaccinated. You know, the, the safety of the vaccines, et cetera, and really trying to encourage that. So I think you'll start seeing some stuff coming out from Better Together and others in the community that are combining with this effort to really increase the people getting out to get these vaccines as we, as, as Sam Driver said earlier, you, those final percentages are harder and harder to accomplish. And so we'll be working really hard to get that last thirty-two, thirty-five percent, whatever we can get vaccinated. So please feel free to, you know, to reach out and help in any way you can with your own networks and certainly to promote the marketing when you start seeing it. Thank you.
I just wanted to mention this Sunday is the South District Neighborhood Association's Team Up to Cleanup Event, which is an annual neighborhood beautification effort. And everyone is welcome and encouraged to come help. We're picking up trash along roadways as well as weeding and planting flowers and seeds adjacent to the mural on Broadway Street, and also just picking up all around the South District. So southdistrictneighborhood.org is the website to, if anyone would like to learn more or to sign up.
Here are no other updates. We're gonna move on to our city staff. Any updates from our city manager?
No updates tonight, Mayor.
All right, our Assistant City Manager.
I'll just say thank you very much to Ryan's service and wish him the best in pursuit of whatever the future awaits. Thanks, Ryan.
Great. And we have an interim city attorney. Welcome, Sue Dulick, on your first night as interim. Any updates from you?
No, but Eleanor reports that two days of retirement, she's enjoying it so far.
Great, 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 great. And then our city clerk, any update?
Nope, nothing from me.
All right. Did I get a motion to adjourn?
Second, Taylor.
Moved by Sala, Sally, seconded by Taylor. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed?
Everyone.
Yes, good night, good night.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.